Good evening, everyone's, everyone's. Happy Wednesday to you and to yours. Come on in the room. Welcome to Spirit and Truth Sanctuary. We are glad that you're here. Are you hungry? Are you hangry? Are you curious? Are you concerned? Are you cautious? Are you inquisitive? Are you deconstructing from harmful theology that was programmed into you as a child? Are you being vigilant and aware while you reconstruct something? Deconstruction is both a painful and a productive process, but in the reconstruction, we can build something just as ridiculous. And so the tendency of human progress is to become slowed, to become hampered or burdened by what we call the pendulum swing. And so we swing from religious literalism over to throwing the Bible and all other holy books away because they're just man's crazy ideas. And so we just go back and forth. Think about from, from kind of the 60s, the 60s sentiment politically, especially with younger college-age people. And then what happened in the 80s? We just swung one to the other. And then what's just from the 80s to the 90s and early 2000s, we swung back through alternative rock and gangster rap and all of these very politically-charged messages. Then we kind of swung back about 2010, something a little more conservative. That's kind of the ebb and flow of human progress that is incredibly, I believe, detoured by and delayed by these pendulum swings. And so in the process of our deconstruction, questioning critically all sacred texts, including the Holy Bible, whether it's King, the King James or other translations, let's be sensitive to our emotions, to ourselves, to our thinking, that we don't just swing from one pendulum to another. Let us think charitably about those who wrote the sacred text, all of them and their different diversities, and also critically that they were doing what they could with the culture that they were living in. However, we have some better tools and methodologies to rightly divide between what is man's ideas and what is a little bit more of what we might consider eternal spirited truths. All right, welcome, 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 welcome. We're glad you're in the house tonight. I do have an incident to report. I need to make a legal, I need legal documentation of this, a police report. Brandy tried to kill me this week. She tried to murder me. She was driving the boat and I was on the float in the back and she was whipping me around on that lake and I was bumping up and down and my 52-year-old body was about to crack in half. And she was doing just that. She was laughing. She was laughing at me.
Well, you said, you know, you gotta catch it just right. I did. I caught it just right.
That's right. That's right. Whip it, whip it, baby. I'll whip it right. Whip it up. Yes, I try trip. She whipped me around that lake, that's for sure.
We have video evidence of it.
Video evidence, yes. You're going, you're going, you're going to jail. You're going to jail for trying, for trying to kill me. We had several days of peaceful rest and ate some good food and our dogs got a chance to see nature and our children came up for a couple of days and our close friends. It was a really beautiful time of rest. Glad to be back in the pocket. We are tonight in Bishop Carlton D. Pearson's The Gospel of Inclusion. This is the post-modern Reformation. What does post-modernism mean? Modernism or modernity lends itself to science, to things like the Enlightenment, where we came away from, you know, ideas like superstitions and all of that that is wrapped up in pultices and root workers and kind of leaned heavily into, if you can't prove it scientifically, it doesn't work. And while the Enlightenment was necessary, it brought about some piece of an educational revolution and awakening. It was also, it leaned a little too far toward a literalism. And so post-modernism, which is what I believe he is, a post-modern reformer, kind of takes the literal mind and the spiritual mind and allows them to intersect, allows a conflation of that which we know to be factual and also that which we know to be truth. And truth and facts are not always exactly the same thing. I did want to read some, because our lesson, our Bible lesson for tonight, Week 78, is "You Are Already Born Again." And this is, this is one of the first pages in The Gospel of Inclusion. I don't know if you can see, I kind of underlined it there. This is literally just right after the publication page. It says, "The entire world is saved, they just don't know it." That's CDP, a quote from his in 2006, I believe, yeah. And so we're in Week 78. Thank you again, the life, the living, the legacy, the courage, the commitment. He said to us many times, "I lost it all to gain everything. What shall a man give in exchange for his soul?" What will you give in exchange for your heart? The way that your heart thinks over what your head says is safe or political or status quo or just another lemming following the crowd? But he lost it all to gain everything. I believe he gained his soul. All right, let's jump in to our devotion and on tonight. We are in a new month. It's September. It's the third and we're gonna be in the month, the theme for the month is "Truth is a journey, not a destination." Isn't that where, ooh, isn't that where the, where the journey begins is realizing that it never ends? Yeah, stop trying to end something. Every religion ideology that has any sense of structure to it, whether they be methodologies or dictates or doctrines or catechisms or oral tradition that's passed down, they're trying to find eternal life, salvation through Jesus Christ, good works, reincarnation, karma, nirvana, the end, the cessation of suffering. All of these are just different ways of trying to, the fountain of youth, Vasco da Gama, trying to find an eternal life. And so the way that we find eternality is not by ending, not by concretization or crystallization or conclusive thinking. But if you want to be, if you want to be so eternal, stop concluding. Let spirit continue to bring you manna each day. And so that's why this month is really the beginning of, of the journey of celebrating truth as a journey, not as a destination. September 3rd, the harmony of your heart space. Here's our affirmation. Tonight I will recognize that every disharmonious thought I have is actually a lie. I will stay, I will stay in my heart space and see all situations through the lens of love. Isn't, isn't that interesting? Did you know that there's enough food in this planet, on this planet that no one should ever go hungry? In America, we throw away a large portion, percentage of the food that we manufacture. Why don't we, why doesn't that food go immediately to the houseless? Why is that food not immediately freeze, frozen in some way and sent to countries that are in desperate need? Well, because why would we give something away when we can sell it? We'd rather throw it away than, than give it away. It sets a precedent somehow that we, that we can't uphold. We cannot take empty businesses or buildings that are businesses trying to force their employees who are probably more productive working from home to come back into the office because we have to justify owning buildings. We gotta justify leases and rental and space and gotta keep up appearances. But those buildings could be used to house the houseless. Those spaces could be used as shelters for abused women. There are so many different things we could do if we only had the courage to follow our heart. If I only had a brain, yeah. A heart, a mind, a, what was the Wizard of Oz?
A heart?
The naive, the naive nerve, remember? The naive. How can you tell that actor was not from Kansas? That was somebody from New York City or Boston, maybe. All right, so what is, what's the point of tonight's, tonight's devotion? Look at the second sentence, I believe. "If we use mental logic alone," we should use it, but not alone, "to try and figure out our place in the universe while ignoring our heart-centered intuition, all we end up with is confusion, which is, which is all a dualistic system has to offer." So when you, when you don't allow your mind to be part of your heart, Jesus said, or the proverb says it this way, "As a man thinks in his heart, so is he." As a man thinks in his heart, so is he. We call this singularity because it is our connection to the source of all consciousness. So some people call it heart, the heart mind, even heart math at times. Look at the very last paragraph. That means the only true reality is that which uses the heart space or love as its filter. Let me help you. You do not read the Bible or study the Bible to teach you how to love. That is a backwards approach. You awaken to love and then you use the filter of love to help you read the Bible. If you read the Bible looking for definitions, you will find man's patriarchy, culturalism, tribalism, misogyny, homophobia, xenophobia, hierarchies, superiority, chosenness, slavery, racism, wow, yeah, treating women as property. But if you, if you have a baptism of loving the self first, falling in love with yourself and then you read the Bible through the lens of love, you'll apply that filter more accurately, and I think even theologically, to what the Bible is saying to us. Mahatma Gandhi said it this way. He said, "When your thoughts, your words and your action are all on the same page, you will find harmony or you'll achieve a harmonious life." Thoughts, words, actions. In Buddhism, it is called the Eightfold Noble Path. Right living, right thinking, right action, right livelihood, right. So in essence, I can't just stay in a monastery all day and pray my way into, into the end of suffering, but my, my thoughts, my actions, my words, my deeds, my, the way I make money, the way I treat others, the way I move throughout nature, all of that has to be on the same page of love to truly find a sense of harmony. All right, let's grab our prayer at the very bottom. Source of harmony. Help me tonight to discern the difference between looking at situations through the dualistic nature of my mind and the harmonious, loving nature of my heart. We need both. We need both of them. Amen, somebody. All right, welcome once again to Spirit and Truth Sanctuary. We're glad you're here. We are excited to be in the pocket with you tonight and eat what you can. We're gonna offer you a lot of food tonight. One thing that I want us to be aware of is that when we enter these conversations, I want you to take the root word of that word conversation or at least a shorter word. I don't know if it's the root word. It is to converse. So in evangelical approach, the goal is to convert you, to convince you and then to convert you. We are not here to convince you. We are not, our goal is not to convert you to even inclusive theology. Our desire is to converse with you, to open up a conversation. Come, let us reason together. We ask big questions here, like, is God a failure? Is God a divine parent that cannot teach, parent instruct its own children? Whom the Lord loves, he chastens. The Greek word is padeia, teaches. Chasten's a bad, bad translation. That's, that's the king, that's the King James for you. Whom the Lord loves, he instructs. She instructs. And so the Sophia, the lady of wisdom, the divine wisdom that is available to us, doesn't come by imposing thoughts on each other. It comes by conversing with each other. The greatest compliment that we can give to each other is to allow each other our own mental agency. Don't believe what I teach, consider it. Chew on it. If it, if it helps you, if it helps you not only personally, but if it helps the collective consciousness and the, and the, and the globalized human family, then consider it maybe a little more deeply. If it divides us, if it causes violence, if it creates caste and separation and segregation and hierarchy, which eventually becomes violence, whether it's the violence of socioeconomic oppression or the revolt of the have-nots against the haves. Either way, when we separate ourselves, it tends toward violence. And so consider, consider what we're bringing to you on tonight. All right, here's our discussion questions or prompts. Number one, is there a difference between being saved, belief and confession? That's kind of how we're situating it tonight, and born again, which Bishop Pearson talks about as a psychological rebirth? Is there a difference in being saved, believing and confessing, and actually being born again or a psychological rebirth? Number two, if some Christians position being saved as superior to the unsaved, does this superiority always translate into superior ethics? Let's, let's read that again. If Christians, let's just say many, or at least some, think that being saved makes them superior to the unsaved, okay? Does this superiority, does it translate into superior ethical behavior? Number three, why would death and destruction be automatic and indiscriminate? In essence, the finished work of Adam. All men died in Adam, 1 Corinthians 15. And while life and resurrection are prejudiced and selective, in essence, why is the finished work of Adam's death and destruction something that is, is automatic, imputed and indiscriminate while the salvific work or the finished work of grace or the cross or Calvary or Christ is somehow prejudiced and selective? And it is not applied universally, but it is applied through a person's will and agency, our own agency. I think that's an interesting question. Yeah. Is that a minimizing of the work of Jesus? All right, peoples, let's jump in tonight. Yep.
So questions are in your chat. I was having a little trouble with the graphics, but they are in your chat.
Questions are in your chat, so look them up, think about them. And then let's, let's have an interesting discussion tonight. Pages 98 through 100, interesting. No subject. "An evangelical thought is more sensitive than being born again." Brandy and I were driving home from Spring City or Dayton, Dayton, Tennessee today and we passed even some smaller kind of, they were not urban towns. I was like, look how big that church building is right there. My goodness, that looks like a, like a pretty big building. And what you'll find even in smaller towns is if there is a talented preacher who can, who can get the right music at the end of the sermon, who can tell stories about teenagers being in head-on collisions, leaving a youth service and not getting saved. One of my, one of my mentors and predecessors used to tell a story when I was a child of a young man who kept promising that he was gonna get his life right, gonna give his life to Jesus, gonna come to the altar, believe and confess, accept Jesus as his, as his Savior. And then he died in a motorcycle accident and I think died in, in my predecessor's arms. That story got more people to the altar. My God, my God, my God. Yeah, preacher, I, I will. At some point, I will. What if, what if Jesus should come or call tonight? Are you right? Is your lamp, is your, is your lamp trimmed? Is your lamp trimmed? Is your lamp trimmed? Is your heart right? Have you, have you confessed? Have you, do you have any sin that you haven't confessed to the, to the Lord or publicly? Yeah, all these are kind of moves toward building kind of monstrosities of churches. My children, when they were little, played in this little church basketball league and my mother came in and when you walk into this building, it's like this beautiful kind of atrium and like these walls with books and libraries and just everything and gorgeous finishings and vaulted ceilings and state-of-the-art athletic. And my mother said, "My God, look at this building, what, what this, what this church has built." And I said, "Mother, look what hell built. Look what mission work builds. Look what having to have enemies like Muslims and liberals and gays, yeah, and immigrants." When you, if you want to build a large building or a large movement, you need enemies, okay? Because enemies help you find camaraderie or common vision. Sometimes the enemy is a person. Sometimes it's atheist or, or other way, other systems of thought. Sometimes there are people groups. And then you have to also picture Satan as an enemy. Satan must be pictured as an enemy, the ruler of this age, the ruler of the air who is holding people in this torture chamber. His time is short. So he's, he's working overtime and God fell asleep at night. So Satan came in and sowed weeds among the, among the weed and the, sowed some tares among, among the, you know, the, the good crops. And we gotta, we gotta be able to get through all that to build big churches. And so I'm just not willing to sell my soul. Can't do it. And I'm not gonna manipulate people into, into coming to an altar so we can build a big church. That is the way that it is. Being born again, it is the crux of our faith, the number one prerequisite to salvation. This conversation in John 3, remember that leads us into John 3:16, is the single most cited scripture supporting the erroneous concept of exclusivity with regard to salvation. All right, so see if you can tell me, if you've been listening to my, our thought processes recently, can you tell me the difference between the synoptic gospel's image of Jesus and the gospel of John? And what their, what their methodologies are? How do the, how does Mark, Matthew and Luke, how do those approach Jesus? And how is that vastly different than how John's gospel or the writer of John's gospel presents Jesus? Okay, do you know the difference in those things? It's an interesting question here, isn't it? Yeah, so I did an entire month on the gospels, getting to know Jesus through the gospels. Can you, right now, could you tell me just in a couple of sentences, what is the difference in Matthew, Mark and Luke's Jesus and the synoptic gospel's idea of Jesus and in John's approach to Jesus? Okay, so that's important as we, as we come into this conversation. Okay, so that's important as we, as we come into this conversation tonight. Uh, alright, uh, this is John three. In reply, Jesus declared, I tell you the truth, no one can see the kingdom of God. Unless he is born again. What is the kingdom? It's not something on the way up there over there in the future. It's not necessarily all that apocalyptic, even though Jesus was definitely an apocalyptic prophet. Believed in a coming kingdom, that people had to kind of repent or get right to be part of this coming kingdom. But when he talks about seeing the kingdom, what is he talking about? That's an interesting. There's a lot of people who who are believers, but they don't see the kingdom. What is the kingdom? It is an upside-down challenge to most of the way the systems of the world work. Love your enemies, bless those who curse you, give everything you have, follow me. The first shall be last, the last shall be first, the servant will be the greatest. That is the kingdom. It it's it's a different way of approaching life than our capitalistic uh views of of kind of. Positioning Jesus as the president of capitalism. Alright, how can a man be born when he is old? Nicodemus asked. Surely he cannot enter his mother's womb to be born again? Jesus answered, I tell you the truth, no one can enter the kingdom of God unless he is born of water and the spirit. So we we kind of literalize that with physically baptizing people in water. You're not saved. How many of you were raised? With some difficult theology that it wasn't enough just to believe and confess Jesus, but you had to get water baptized. Because you can't enter the kingdom unless you go into the water. And so watch this, now we have a church in Atlanta that doesn't even have a baptismal pool. We bought a United Methodist church. They don't baptize, they they sprinkle, throw some water in your face. Yeah, so how do we, oh, Lord, we got a church without a baptism pool. What are we gonna do? We're going to wake up from our adolescent theologies. And realize that baptism is a condition of the heart, just as circumcision is. Circumcision is not a condition of the flesh, it is a condition of the heart. Baptism is a dying to the old way of thinking. And a surrender to allowing the Holy Spirit. It is a death and a resurrection. It is a burial and a res- we are raised with Christ in our in our baptism, whether you get in water or not. You are taking on the way of Jesus, not just belief in Jesus. Baptism is the way of Jesus. Hmm, we could teach probably a whole month on just what what really is baptism. Uh, okay, uh, flesh gives birth to flesh, but spirit gives birth to spirit. The gospel of inclusion suggests. That humankind is already saved. Hmm, that's why I read that tonight. Whether they know it or not, there are, the world is saved, the entire world. However, most just don't, can't and won't know it until they are born again. Or awakened in their thinking. So here, Bishop Pearson is is making a distinction. Do you see it? Do you see the distinction in these last two lines? What's the difference? He's making this a distinction between being saved and being born again. The world is saved. They have been reconciled to God through a finished work of grace. Now, I don't believe in atonement the- theology. Blood, blood sacrifice, all of that, but it's a good entry point. It's a good talking point. It's a good place to start, okay? That if Jesus bled and died and got poured out wrath on Jesus, then the. The anger of God has been satisfied, God has made peace with us through the blood, we are not peace with God. So we are saved. But to be born again means to awaken in a different way of thinking. Now, not only am I safe, because I believe and confess, I'm safe with God. I'm taking on a Christ-conscious mind, which looks in the mirror and beholds the image and likeness of God. So notice the difference there that's being made between salvation or being saved and born again again. In Christian theology, there is a spiritual rebirth associated directly with the resurrection of Christ from the dead. And here it is, there is a psychological rebirth that is the result of simply walking into this reality. Or waking up to this reality. So what does that mean? So there is a sense of theological approach to if Jesus resurrected from the dead. Then I'm gonna be resurrected with Jesus at some point in the second coming. In this eschatological event that's gonna happen in the future. But there's also something that can take place right now that is a psychological rebirth. When we wake up to the reality that Christ is the firstborn. Reborn, born again, rebirth, resurrected among many brethren. So that was the whole point of First Thessalonians, chapter four, being caught up in the air, and that's actually what Paul meant. It wasn't to be raptured away, it was to be caught up in the air to greet Jesus, almost going out to to meet a king. That time period believed that Jesus and other deities lived kind of in this space um above the clouds. And so we were going to be caught up to meet Jesus, then come back to the earth or the kingdom of God as it's as it's established. On the earth, not raptured away, remember, those who are taken away are the disobedient, are the evil, the wicked. Those who are left behind, as in the days of Noah, okay, uh, Matthew, chapter twenty-four, I believe. Um, is it four twenty-four? I need to look again. Uh, we want to be the ones left behind, but what is that First Thessalonians four talking about? Paul is making a plea to those who are Platonist, who are followers of Plato. And they're trying to understand the material world and the spiritual world. What does that mean? Paul is trying to convince them, when we are resurrected, when we have a new body. We will be the same substance as Jesus. So watch this, so if Jesus is made of helium, let's just use that for an example. Then if we are made of helium, we're going to rise to the same level as Jesus. The imagery there is kind of secondary. Primary is what Paul is trying to say to to a Pla- a Pla- to middle Platonist. Who are in that philosophical mode, is that in our new bodies, we will be the exact, when we see him, there we go. We will be like him, we will meet him at that same level. Okay, so that takes a psychological rebirth to wake up to that connection. This, this is what we call Christ consciousness, the connection to God and our divinity. Uh, to God, uh, humans have always sensed and sought long before Jesus walked the earth. Jesus came to emphasize that consciousness, not to create it. Evangelical Christians teach that unless a person had a personal experience with Christ wherein. Uh, they recognized him as Savior, they are not saved and will not go to heaven. This encounter is considered the born again experience. Have you been born again? Yeah. Uh, and so think about when Jesus asked Nicodemus, have you been born again? There's no way Nicodemus could have gotten saved. He wasn't confessing Jesus as his Lord and Savior. He was saying, have you had a psychological rebirth? Have you disconnected from the literalism of of religious ideology? Are you open? Are you available? Are you al- allowing spirit to bring you new manna and fresh uh, fresh ideas every day? The born again experience, that is how kind of we've appro- misappropriated it. And constitutes their initial rite of passage into the special remnant of persons. Who are privileged to know God and live forever with God in heaven. According to this doctrine, everyone else will go to hell forever. This belief, and remember, remember, there's a lot of ambiguity around that word eternal. It's a terrible use of the word. It's assuming some things. King James is assuming some things, or his translators are. The word there in the Greek is not eternal, it is the word aeonian or aeon. Which is is very ambiguous. It's usually not eternal. It is more likely an age. Or an age-abiding correction is really what's happening, uh, what we believe scholars believe is happening there. Uh, alright, this belief lends itself to a sense of superiority, mm-hmm, over those bound for eternal fire. Hmm, indeed, uh, that is one of its purposes. For many, this concept is a bunch of pagan superstition. But for billions, it is unavoidable truth, and thus part of the debate. After all, denial of hell is what cost me my ministry. Isn't that interesting? So he's not saying he was wrong, he's saying I bumped up against a system that predominantly thought I was wrong. Now, if Carlton were not a Pentecostal, if he were not an evangelical but more of a mainline preacher. His preaching would not have been all that controversial. Had Carlton Pearson been raised an Episcopal, a Unitarian. Even for s- in some ways, a Lutheran, uh, a Presbyterian in many Me- Methodist circles. If he had said, the world is saved, I believe in universal salvation, everyone's been like, yeah, we've been considering that for hundreds of years. It might have been, it might have been fresh, but it would not have been co- controversial. He definitely would have been kicked out. Yeah, it's because he was an a Pentecostal holiness evangelical, which stay with me, people, I'm not trying to set up. A hierarchy here. Just Google this, Google Christian denominations and put in that Google line. Levels of education. Or exposure to ed- to secondary education, or or even PhDs or master's work. Just Google that and you're gonna find that Episcopalians, Lutherans, Trinitarian, Unitarians. Um, Methodist, Presbyterians have a higher level of exposure to education than. Assemblies of God, Church of God, Church of God in Christ, Holiness Apostolic. What are we saying here? We're not saying, we're not setting up a eugenics debate. We're not saying, we're not talking about capacity here, or or even determinism. We're saying exposure to higher levels of education allows the mind to see God differently. Very few that are exposed to that higher level of education believe in an eternal hell, that six something billion people are gonna burn in forever. You don't find that very, but you get down to this other space where people are not exposed to higher levels of 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 education. And that's, so it becomes superstition. It becomes tr- a tradition, it becomes ritualistic, it becomes just part of the culture of what what we teach. Because it's hard to understand wickedness or uh, behavior or uh, gay people or other religions, it's spooky, it's weird. Yeah, that's that's just part of the uneducated process. Thank thank God for better exposure. Amen. And that's really kind of my goal. And in even uh, get in my doctoral work is not to go to school by myself, but to share it with you. I want you to know what I know. I want you to be exposed to what I, what I'm learning and what is being confirmed in our teaching. Uh, for this concept, it is superstition, uh, but for many, uh, it is an unavoidable truth. After all, uh, hell, that's what cost me my ministry. As important as being born again is thought to be. The term itself has very little mention in scripture. It is mentioned once by Jesus at night to one person in a private conversation. Never to the masses and never by the apostles who succeeded Christ in the ministry of the gospel. And and or those in the patristic period, the early church fathers. There is a reason for this. If, as scripture states in first Corinthians fifteen twenty-two, all die because of Adam. And in Christ, all will be made alive, then the same principle has to be connected to being born again. Jesus is referred to as the firstborn, there it is, of uh, of of all creation, Colossians one fifteen. The use of this term first suggests there must be others following, and I and most others. Have always assumed those followers to be Christians. However, if in the first Adam, all of humankind dies. Come on, let's reason together. Then does it not follow that in the last Adam or Christ, all of humankind is resurrected or born anew? And let me ask you a question. And if and if we're not able to say that, what's at stake here? I will tell you what's at stake. The first thing is at stake is the power of Christ. We are saying that the power of the first Adam is greater than the power of Christ. Why? We don't have to add anything to Adam's work of disobedience, but we must add faith, confession, belief. Uh, all of the public acknowledgements, all of these things have to be added to Jesus' work, but they don't have to be added to Adam's work. Secondly, what's at stake here is the character of God. The nature and character of the re- of a redeeming, uh, of rede- of a redeeming creator. Is our Creator redemptive by nature, or ve- or or is he about revenge? Is the Creator punitive, or is the Creator per- purgative, purging? Do we worship a torturer or a teacher? Hmm, a father or a failure, something that's motherly or malicious? Y'all like all that alliteration there? Yeah, the these are just common sense questions. They're not, they're not, it's not biblical theology here. What does that mean? We're not trying to proof text something. We are taking a look at the entire canon. Uh, more so, more of a meta-narrative of the redemptive nature of of the Creator God. Romans six, three through eight, why would, why would death and destruction be automatic and indiscriminate? All men die in Adam, while life and resurrection be prejudicial and selective to a to a few. Or only those who believe or confess. Those are some existential questions, are they not, people? That's some big shift we talking about tonight. Yeah. Alright, uh, our three discussion prompts. Is there a difference between between being saved and being born again, between a belief and a confession and a psychological rebirth? If some Christians, number two, position being saved as being superior to the unsaved. Does this superiority translate into superior behavior? Superior morality, superior ethics. I'm watching, I've been re-watching a show that, uh, during our little short vacation. Called The Good Place. If you have not watched it, check it out, people. The Good Place. It's an excellent show. It brings in, uh, it brings in theories from Gandhi, from Buddha, from Immanuel Kant, uh, from Sorn Kierkegaard. Of the afterlife, of afterlife experiences, of what does that mean? Who deserves the afterlife? It's a comedy. It's really, I'm not, I don't think it's, it's not a dystopian comedy, but it's. It's definitely, uh, um, I would say it's a satire. It's a satirical comedy on afterlife ideas. If you haven't, if you needed some, a good, a new good show, get get your, get your computer out, cause. They're gonna throw a lot of philosophy and and ethics out, and names that you may or may not be uh, familiar with. Uh, but it's an ex- it's an excellent show. It's called The Good Place, The Good Place. Number three, why would death and destruction be automatic and indiscriminate, in essence? Why would Adam's work of death be finished while life and resurrection are prejudiced and selective? Or watch this, they depend on justification by faith. Salvation through faith, belief confession. Alright, my peoples, talk to me, at me, around me, wha- whatever you feel.
Alright, well, good evening, everyone. Okay, before we jump into questions, couple of. Really quickly, hopefully you guys can hear me. Okay, let me bring this. Alright, uh, earlier, Andy, Allison and LaSonia. Were talking about how good the questions were when they first jumped on tonight. These are some good questions tonight, and then I thought we'd give a shout out, um, Pierre Chambers is on tonight. I think he's registered for the conference, so we'll see him soon in October.
Register for the conference and correct.
Or not conference, sorry, family reunion.
Family reunion. And help me, Pierre, he is doing, I don't know if it's your master's work or your or your doctoral work. In psychology, I believe, right now, and so we're very, very, very proud. I think made uh, all A's. Uh, in e- either one of your first semesters, so congratulations to the work you're doing. We need. He- healthy, psychological, educated minds who can still speak on tongues and get the Holy Ghost shout, but rightly divide the. Word and human behavior. Thank you.
He said, we still yet holding on.
Are are you yet holding on? Well, get what you want and get plenty.
Um, Andy also talked about that we bought a Methodist church, but with a baptistry. It also had drums and a ham and organ. I think they're more like us than not.
Uh, there and there may be a little distinction between United Methodist and Me- and the Methodist. I'm I'm, I'll have to look into that, Andy, but I don't, I don't think United Methodist baptize, but maybe Methodist do, I'm I'm not sure. We'll see.
Hey, maybe they bought it from another church and just never took the baptismal out.
Yeah, very well could have. I kept, by the way, Reverend, I have the little, um. Uh, water that's sprinkled upon the infants, and it's such a beautiful, like, little wooden thing with a little. It's so beautiful. It's in my office. I could not get rid of it. I was like, I, I am a United Methodist too. It's a beautiful piece. Of architecture and and an artifact that is gonna be part of, a part of my life for the rest of my life.
So if somebody wants to get sprinkled, we'll do it, right?
I'll sprinkle you right in your face.
Um, LaSonia also said a little earlier, uh, when you ask about the synoptic gospel, Jesus of Matthew. Versus whoever's left, the leftovers, Mark and Luke, show us a Jesus who is more humanly raw. Like Mark or more universally compassionate Luke, while Matthew's Jesus is a Torah fulfilling, kingly Messiah for Israel.
Hmm, interesting, yeah. And and Matthew's approach in that kingship. Is uh, trying to establish him as the fulfillment of prophecy in that kingly. Uh, in that Davidic order. So Matthew is really working to establish the Davidic connection and really the Mosaic connection as well. Uh, trying to position him as the liberative Moses. Uh, telling the stories of Herod trying to kill him at his birth, as Pharaoh tried to kill Moses at his birth. Uh, but but even the birth narratives. Uh but but even the birth narratives uh are trying to work at that, Ju- is it, was that it?
Yes, we can.
John's gospel, uh uh LaSonia, is trying to position Jesus as the creator God. In the beginning was the word, the word was with God, all that was created was created through the word, so. Matthew, Mark and Luke do not, even though they see him differently, uh as compassionate, as a king, as a fulfillment of prophecy, as a Messiah. As liberative, the liberator, a mosaic, a Davidic character, but they don't see him as God. They don't necessarily see him all the time as divine, but John, eh so what is, i- in those three gospels. Jesus is preaching a coming kingdom. He's not saying believe in me is the way to salvation, he's not saying believe with your heart, confess with your mouth, and you'll be saved if you just believe in me, he's saying repent. Change the way you think, change the way you act, there is a coming kingdom. There is another kingdom coming, and if you don't get yourself right, you're gonna miss the kingdom, that's what's happening in Matthew, Mark and Luke. In John, it ain't even about a coming kingdom, it's about, I need to be established as God. As this uh as the supreme God, as the creator God over all the other Hellenistic and Greco-Roman gods, and so. Yes, that that you definitely were hitting the nail on the head, and then just to add that, it's a difference in. The son of man and establishing Jesus as God, as the divine creator God, it's great, thanks.
Alright, let's jump in for number one, is there a difference between being saved, belief and confession and born again, psychological rebirth? Uh Mike Williams, hello friend, Mike shared, yes, everyone is saved, but just Christians, while most saved Christians. Have never been born again, born again. Born again from above is an awareness and awakening and enlightenment that happens repeatedly. Throughout a person's life who is open to constant learning.
So, there we go, Michael, thank you for the for the Greek lexicon there, so you must be born again really isn't a great translation. You must be born, the Greek word is anothen. Okay, anothen, from another place, you must be born from above is really how that should be translated. Not born out of some heavenly space, you must be born from a higher way of thinking, you must be born anew. Or anothe- anothen, another, from above, very good Mike, thanks, and most Christians. Are hmm hmm are saved, but they are not born yet from above, not a kingdom mentality. I shouldn't say most, that's not right.
What 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 is that?
I said I shouldn't say most, I should say many, yeah, that's not, it's not always fair.
Richard shared, I believe the difference between being saved and being born again is that we have always been saved. But never told or aware that we are saved, I believe being born again is when we become aware and accept. That we have always been saved, that is salvation is a free gift from God that only requires our acceptance.
Said it did, yeah, so distinction there Richard between. Uh the world being saved or already reconciled to God, whether that's in time. Or in eternity, whether we are on a salvific, a salvific continuum. I was saved, I am saved, I am being saved, the lamb slain before the foundation of the world. I am saved when I confess, I'm walking out my salvation with fear and trembling, so in that way salvation isn't linear. It is more cyclical or a continuum, so God is existing out of time, there was salvation. And yet, uh if the world is saved, they may not be yet born again because they're not awakened to it. So remember how we position faith in this conversation, does it mean that faith is not necessary, it's just not necessary to salvation. Faith is necessary, Richard, to to revealing in us a psychological rebirth, woo. So what is that, Jesus is the author and finisher of our faith, so my faith doesn't save me. But my faith connects me to the truth that I have been saved, so now I can be psychologically. Reborn through the faith connection to what has already happened, woo, I like it, Richard, thanks.
Uh Lulu shared confession is rooted in the presupposition of being born inherently evil. Or it's our fault. Um she wrote Metanoia is realizing that our inner kid or born again has always been connected to the divine.
Isn't that the ultimate lie, Lulu? Yeah, so, huh, what is our work? How do we position ourselves with our, how do, are we supposed to show up in the world or mo- move through humanity? To tell them that they were born in sin or shapen in iniquity, I think that's probably the original lie. Yeah, that we, because of a snake and an apple and a. Eating of knowledge, have you, have you, have we ever asked ourselves the honest question, why would God wanna keep us from knowledge? If we're made in the image and likeness of God, are we not capable of having knowledge, morality? Not see- seeing the difference in the binaries, why would God limit our knowledge? And why does this serpent want us to have it? That's interesting, isn't it? Yeah, so in that way, is is that a slight to us that? Well, you're kind of made in the image and likeness of God, but you're really dumb too, so I can't trust you with knowledge. Yeah, so the Gnostics kind of were the antithesis of that. They believe we were supposed, no- Gnostics or gnosis, knowledge, that we were supposed to have deep esoteric knowledge and that we were capable. Of understanding it, yeah, and so in that way, there doesn't have to be a salvation salvation event. If we don't believe or or believe the lie that we are separated from God, the metaphor is really beautiful, who told you you were naked? I don't perceive that you're naked, and and I didn't kick you, they even noticed that. After they ate of the tree, the fruit, whatever it is, the knowledge, they try to cover themselves, they hide from God. That's that's really an anthropomorphic moment, that the sound of God walking in the garden. You know, God's not, God's not a man walking in the garden, but that's how Genesis kind of slips into anthropomorphizing God. But in that conversation, they are not forced out of the garden by God, really, think about it. They're not forced out of the garden by God. God re- God respects the God in them, God s- God said. God saw, God surveyed, and then occasionally God had to shift some things. Saw that man, it was not good for man to be alone, okay? Now I'm trusting you, Adam and Eve, with the naming, the saying, the creative agency of your divinity. If you say this is a zebra, it is a zebra. If you say this plant is this, that's what the plant will be, if you say you're clothed in my glory, that's what it is. If you say that you're ashamed and you're naked, I, the God in me has to agree with the God in you. Anybody feel a preach right there? So, the the power, watch this, life and death are in the power. Of the tongue, but that's really not true, because the tongue is just the servant of the mind. So if I perceive I'm naked, shameful, sinful, I need a savior. I need a middleman, I need a substitutionary atonement, I need blood, I need a sacrificial lamb, I need pa- a Paschal offering. But if I perceive oneness with God, I don't need a savior, and Jesus doesn't become my savior, Jesus becomes my elder brother. A wayshower, the master teacher, the enlightened one, bringing us into the same consciousness, that's good, thanks.
Andy shared, I've given a lot of thought to the idea of born again, I think it's one of three inter- interpretations. First is held by most, born of water is natural birth, born of spirit is spiritual birth. Second is the apostolic thought, born of water is water baptism, born of spirit is HG baptism? The third, I think, is most correct, through uh though the others may have truth in them. Born of water is natural birth, born of spirit is when the body gives up the spirit or death.
I like that, but y- yes, you have sir, you have given some thought, think about all the different entry points there. And let let's, so let's, let's, let's position ourselves in the entry points that Reverend Allison just gave us. That we don't have to decide which one is necessarily right or wrong. Instead of asking, are any of these entry points accurate or inaccurate? Let's ask questions like, what's at stake with each entry point? And are there levels? Are there levels of different understandings of salvation that we, so so think about this Reverend. Jesus said, the law and the prophets were until John. Since that time, the kingdom has been preached and everyone is pressing into it, that's actually. In context, that I think the next verse says the kingdom suffers violence. And the violent take it by force, we took that thing so out of context and said. We're gonna ta- have a kingdom takeover of politics, kingdom takeover of education. Kingdom people are taking over everything, we take, we 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 didn't come to 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 take sides, we came to take over. Take charge, we come to take charge, well, that's that's coming from an oppressed mindset that wants to experience power. That needs to experience authority in some ways, and that's really not the teachings of Jesus, Jesus was a pessimist, not a fascist, uh not a takeover. Not a dictator in any ways, um and sometimes the church reflects that. However, the violence talked about there is a violent break away from that which has been, what's the context? Law, prophets, John, Jesus, kingdom. You have to violently press out of what has been and open up to what is. You've heard of, oh, but I say, that's the, that's the whole context there, that's the theological approach. And if you want some some good uh doctoral uh exegesis, there it is. That is the contextual teaching right there that Jesus, it's not about violently taking over things, it's about a violent takeover of the mind. Pressing away from that, so in that way Reverend, think about the levels that you gave us. There's the milk of the word, there's the meat of the word, and there's the mystery of the word, there is the literal. And there is the letter, and there is the spirit, the literal birth of water. And then the birth, the and then watch this, the experiential birth. Of either a water baptism or a speaking, an Ebo Bochanda speaking in tongues. And even a more mysterious birth of water that spirit can have its way with our mind. So maybe it's, maybe what you gave us there is a good lesson. In just different levels of entry points, they're not all right, necessarily right or wrong. It's just a place, it's a matriculation into consciousness, woo, we are matriculating into higher consciousness, let. Let the Lord have its way, thanks Reverend, that's beautiful.
Alright, number two, if some Christians position being saved as being superior to the unsaved, does this superiority translate into superior ethics? I know my answer, uh Mike Williams shared, no. Fundamentalist evangelical Christians consider themselves saved. While believing all unbelievers and progressive Christians are godless demons. They are not morally or ethically superior to anyone. And in many cases, support hate and outright evil via Christian nationalism and other un-Christlike views.
Interesting, interesting Mike, yeah, um being saved or very Lutheran. To some degree Pauline, I'm I'm trying to be more charitable toward Paul these days, but I do have some real qualms with Paul, or at least. Uh pseudonymous Paul at times, but Lutheran Lutheran approaches, re- re- reformed theology, justification by faith. Has a level of beauty, it really does have a level of the grace message, the. The ragamuffin gospel, the filthy rags gospel, there's some beauty in that, and I can't deny that, we come to God at. Come just as you are, you might remember that Crystal Lewis song. Hear the spirit call, yeah, come just as you're who whoever will, those are beautiful, beautiful ideas. But it also insinuates a brokenness, a fallenness, uh welcome into this place, welcome into this broken vessel. That that Gary Oliver song, love that song, Anointed Song, we just changed the word broken to open. Welcome into this open vessel, I'm not broken, I mean, if if I say I'm broken, I am broken. I choose to be open, I choose to be available, I am beholding in the mirror, watch this, when I was in religion. Okay, a veil lied over my eyes, second Corinthians chapter three. Every time the law was read, it incited guilt, shame, but when I turned to the Lord. Now, now, think about this critically, you're saying that. When you were in the mosaic teaching, the Ten Commandments, the Levitic- Levitical holiness codes. The Deuteronomian, uh Deuteronomist, uh the mystic history, that's a lot of Deuteronomistic history. You're saying that that wasn't the Lord? Are you now negating the Hebrew Bible and God's movement through through the through the Hebrew Israelites? Yeah, that's what Paul is doing, basically, he's saying, when you were with Moses, a veil was over your face, you couldn't even see, you were blinded. But when you turn to the Lord away from your ignorance. The veil is removed and you can see in the mirror the glory of God, now I think that can be very antisemitic. And I think it can be supersessionist, which just means replacing the Jews with a new group of God's chosen, that's very dangerous theology. However, they are interesting talking points, grace can be very beautiful, but it can also be very limiting. It limits us to to a belief instead of a behavior modification, by this time, we ought to look like Jesus. We ought to act like Jesus, we ought to love like Jesus, a new commandment I give you, love each other as I have loved you. And yet we are still stuck on justification by faith, and so we can do whatever the hell we wanna do and just say. Oh, Jesus forgive me, forgive me for my sins, should you come or call. But we're not treating each other more, we're not sharing with each other, we're not preferring our brothers or our sisters. And so, yes, that that can be difficult, I did wanna point out this, there are some Christian denominations. Um that that I think, I think do, do believe in justification by faith. But also express mm good moral ethical behavior, and I'm not talking about staying out of the club or not watching. We're not watching naked people on on the TV show, I'm talking about like service toward humanity. And that would be um our Quaker brother, or the so- society of friends. Which has kind of, kind of has has offshoots in the Christian, the the Christian brethren or brethren church or. Uh the disciples, disciples of Christ kind of movement, there is a lot of morality in those, and they are just, they're primarily justification by faith, but. There is some morality there, now the Southern Baptist, uh evangelical, Holy Ghost people. That that's a different conversation, okay? But think about, uh think about even Armenite or Amish brothers and sisters, now they're very separatist. They can be very insular and very um very pharisaical, not in a negative sense, but just separated from the world. But they try to live in harmony with nature, they try to do good, uh they try to live a simple, moderate life, and so. It doesn't always hold true, but I would say the overwhelming evidence would be. That yeah, just being saved does not necessarily change your ethical behavior, thanks Mike.
Richard shared, these Christians are simply a part of a self-created hierarchy system. That mainly appeases their ego and gives them a false sense of superiority.
I'm saved and you ain't, nanny nanny boo boo, stick your head in doo doo, Richard, how about that? Brady looked at me like, what, anybody remember that, I'm rubber, you're glue, yeah, that that's very much of uh. I've I've got some ice cream, anybody remember Eddie Murphy Delirious, I got some ice cream, you ain't got no ice cream. Yeah, I I have the salvation, you don't have it, kept very Calvinistic approach, I'm the chosen, I'm the elect. God, God saw it predestined me for salvation, but sorry, you don't have the capacity to believe, and so. You're so well, you're just kinda out of luck, yeah, that's a very, very difficult hierarchy, thanks Richard.
Andy shared, hopefully the idea of being saved or transformed does not translate into superior ethics. Not an attitude of superiority, but when you know better, you do better.
When you know better, you do better, yeah, isn't that beautiful? Yeah, I I think that's the difference, uh Andy, in um. I am the way, the truth, and the life, no man comes to the Father but by me, is the me. Jesus as the way, or the person of Jesus as the way, or is the, is it the way of Jesus as the way? And maybe there can be a marriage of the two, maybe for those who are in that space, maybe Jesus is the way to them. Jesus is their introduction or reconnection uh to God or to spirit. But it doesn't, it should not stop there, now we not, not, now that Jesus is not just our way maker, he's our way shower. We are walking in the path that Jesus walked, thanks Rev.
Lulu shared, yes, separation by default creates an us versus them energy. They're wrong. They're the problem, especially with the. Doom wound, hell and rapture exacerbating this. Uh for example, we're running out of time.
The time is short signs of the times, Lulu. Yes, signs of the times, wars, rumors of wars. Earthquakes, famine, pestilence, nation rising against nation, children being disobedient. Yeah. How long has that not been happening in recorded in recorded human history, in the Akkadian histories, in the Sumerian? Histories in the cuneiform tablets. The ear- the earliest uh hieroglyphs that we have record all of those things. Yeah, this these are not the signs of the times or the end of the age. Maybe it's maybe it's maybe it's the end of an age. The end of the age of Pisces. Uh a specific religious indoctrination coming into the age of the Aquarian age. Where the the water pot, the pot, the water gatherer is pouring out. The water in those days. This is that spoken by the prophet Joel. In those days, I will pour out. My spirit on all flesh, not just Christians. Everyone will hear God in their own language. Neighbor will not have to teach neighbor, for everyone will have a knowledge of God. Have you ever seen the Aquarian, the Aquarian um uh sort of iconography? It's almost you're not sure if it's a man or a woman. And if it is a man. If it is a man, it kinda looks like a man. Why is a man carrying a water pot? That was a an identity or gendered role. In the in in that archaic society. That even Aquarius is challenging gender roles. If it's not a man, it almost looks. Uh what would I say? Uh like androgynous. You're not sure if it's a man or a woman. Anybody any Prince fans out there? I'm not your I'm not your woman. I'm not your man. I am something that you'll never understand. Yeah. What if Aquarius is is a reduction? Or a a redress of the binaries? No, I'm not. I'm certainly not. I'm not encouraging every heteronormative or or. Cisgendered person to to be transgender. I I am. I I was born physically male. I feel at home in my male body. But I have many friends who felt who have body dysmorphia. They don't feel like they were born in the same body. So what is that a sign among us? Yeah, is that a sign that maybe God is bigger than male or female, bigger than black or white, bigger than. Christian or Muslim or 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 a Jew or even atheist or agnostic. Maybe spirit intuition, energy, uh vibration, frequency is bigger than all these binaries. Sorry, I got all all into my philosophy there. Thanks.
Alright, so I wanted to share for this one. It kinda makes me think um. If if some Christians position being saved as being superior, I think, yes, they do that. They're superior to the unsaved. Does it translate into superior ethics? Uh no, I I think you and I've had caught so many conversations about. Um irresponsible Christianity. And it's probably the thing that drives me the most insane to see. So I think it might be the opposite. It's like this um this uh well superiority is what it is. I'm saved, you are not, but then you. At least from some people I've been exposed to, let me say that in parentheses. At least from some of my experiences. I'm not saying all Christians are this way or all, you know, especially evangelical or fundamentalist. Um but not only do they judge me quote for not being saved, you know. But then they go do whatever they want, live this irresponsible life, knowing that, well, I'm saved. I confess the name of Jesus, so I can. I can come back to the altar every week and as long as I as long as I say that prayer before I die, I can basically live anyway. So it's almost like the guarantee of I'm saved and I this whole, you know, Jesus is like this cop out to kinda live there. I see it. I mean, I won't I won't start to give any kind of idea of names or examples, but. It's like this irresponsible. It's almost like they're lying to themselves about the kind of life they live. And that irresponsible religion is so awful to me. And if so, maybe we are the more ethical and moral, who we aren't, we aren't.
All of us heretics are the.
All of us heretics are the more ethical because we're not doing it to make it to he- to heaven. We're not doing it to avoid hell. We're doing it because it's right. And it's good. Anyway, that's that's what I was thinking.
Yep, that's a that's a mouthful. That's a lot lot to think about. You ever you ever noticed the different tiers? Of of altar calls? Look, child, you you're not gonna outchurch me. I've been in all of it. Yeah, it starts with salvation. Who wants to be saved? Anyone wanna give their life to Jesus tonight? Usually every head bowed, every eye closed. Will you slip up your hand? Can I ask you to take the next step? Will you will you stand? Will you come to the altar and let us pray with you? And if you're if you're scared to come to the altar, if you're beside someone who's standing up. Don't let that person walk by themselves. Walk up here with them. Oh, now we're clapping. Everybody standing on their feet. Give your life to Jesus, give your life to Jesus. Well, sometimes you don't get one. Well, I I just feel to wait. I know God told me there was one. Is there not one? There's somebody God's moving on your heart. The second tier is. There's somebody who is who has been born again, has been saved. But you're you know that you you need to rededicate your life to Jesus. Who needs to rededicate their life? Usually that you'll get some traction there. You'll get a rededicate your life to Jesus thing. And then if you don't get that. It would be something like, who who came tonight with a hurt? Did you come with a hurt in your heart? Did you come with an alt against somebody? Maybe this is a moment to go to that person and to make it right, to to let that person know that you love them or maybe you came tonight and you had. It just a- all this emotional manipulation, people. No wonder, well, no wonder so many Christians are trying to deconstruct from the way they felt manipulated. Why do we have to manipulate each other into experiences with God? Can we not just walk into God's presence and say? Glory to God, the glory that is in me, wants to connect with the glory that is God. I don't need to get saved. I don't need to get rededicated. I don't need to get rebaptized. I don't need to. Make something right with the person that I've had an altar in my heart against. I just wanna be in God's presence. I don't have any motive. I just I love God. That might be a more sustainable, here we go Brandon, generative. Practical spiritual walk and always having these big emotional moments that we look back at and go, did somebody manipulate me into that? They caught me at a low point in my life and gave me a word or said, God, I know that you've been struggling. Nobody's seen. In the dark hours of the night, nobody's seen the tears that God's seen, but I see and God knows what you know. He has seen your struggle and seen your tears. Who who else who among us haven't had that? How many of us haven't cried ourselves asleep, felt abandoned, neglect betrayed, neglected, uh ignored? All of us have felt that way. These are these are manipulations, people. The the non-manipulative. Way of spiritual practice is connection to God in presence. Not manipulating you after a divorce or bankruptcy or getting fired or after a sickness. But just let let come, let us let us gather together in God's midst. That to me is a su- is a sustainable spiritual practice. I ain't saying, I'm just saying.
Alright, the next question is uh. Interesting for me. Um good question. Why would death and destruction be automatic and indiscriminate? While life and resurrection are prejudiced and selective? Now, was that a direct quote as a question from the book?
It's almost it's almost a direct quote from the la- the last line of the teaching tonight.
And I love I love that. I love that that was what he was. Yeah, I thought it was.
It was so good. I was like, yeah, that's question three.
It is and. Anyway, I just I just love I I love CDP. Um Mike Mike said, good question. Sounds like. Doctrines of devils and literally Antichrist thinking to me.
Think think about positioning. Antichrist. So what is the Antichrist? It's not a person. Paul kind of describes it as a spirit. That denies Jesus has come in the flesh. Okay, so some people say, yeah. The Antichrist spirit are mythosists. Are you familiar with that? That language, a mythosist? A mythosist is someone who says that Jesus never even walked the earth. He was not a historical figure. One of my favorite scholars, probably my favorite scholar, uh is an atheist. He does not believe in God, but he does believe Jesus walked the earth. And so he's a fabulous teacher. I've learned so much from him. Um and he's his goal is not to convert people to atheism. He he's glad for people. He just wants people to practice a more responsible Christianity if you're a believer. Um and and he's raised millions upon millions of dollars for for charities for for people who so. His ethical more but moral behavior is not conditioned uh upon him getting into hell or out of heaven. He doesn't believe in an afterlife. Um but he does bring up some interesting ideas um about our approach to. Uh to both behavior, uh to the the ideas, uh if Jesus. If if there if there are histories outside of the Bible, so we have the history of uh Arineus. And of Eusavius and of Josephus, who are historians, some some have Christian bent. I don't think I don't think Josephus has, or is it Eusavius? I'll have to look again. Anyway. One is not necessarily a Christian historian. He's just a historian in that time that writes about a Jesus of Nazareth. And so when we when we read the Bible, we're basically reading oral tradition of people who. Were around Jesus, whether it was Matthew, Mark, Luke, or John, or somebody writing for them, okay? But that's a little bit prejudicial because they're they're kind of it's kinda like the fox guarding the hen house. They're begging the question of. Well, I Jesus is real because I say he's real because I'm a follower of Jesus. Well, that's not really. You can't really take historical accuracy from that, but if you find a historian that's not a follower of Jesus and begins to write about Jesus, you go. Well, yeah, he's not trying to prove anything. He's just recording history. So why would he make up a thing about Jesus? He's not even a follower of Jesus. So the point is, a lot of people. Think that the Antichrist spirit are those who say Jesus never even was a real person. He was just a conglomeration of. Krishna and Mithras and Horus and all these other figures and characters that came before him and Hammurabi and all these people. But that's not really the Antichrist spirit in its essence, okay? The Antichrist spirit, think about this, that Jesus did not come in the flesh. What did Jesus come here to do according to the central theme of the whole Bible? The whole gospel. What is the whole gospel? I came to reconcile the world back to God. So those who believe that Jesus did not finish that work of reconciliation, that we must get people saved. That we must get people to an altar, that in essence, listen to me, just consider it. Is the Antichrist spirit at work? You are saying he didn't do what he said he did. Adam did what he did. So in your Adamic worship, you are becoming Antichrist. Think about how much the Antichrist spirit is at work in the church, parts of the church that ousted Carlton Pearson. Who all he did was say, Jesus is at least equal to Adam. It's at least an equal, at least all people live. In Christ if all men died in Adam. And the Antichrist spirit is so prevalent. After the work of Constantine and Augustine of Hippo, that people called Carlton Pearson a heretic. For saying that Jesus finished the work. Unbelievable. Now, that's that's a specific appropriation uh for that for that way of thinking, but Mike, I do I do feel you with that. And have a little passion toward it. Thanks, Mike.
Sorry.
Brandy plug, she plugging something. Need me to hand it to you?
Yes, please.
She about to run run out of gas.
Yeah, my my laptop's about to die. This the one that I'm reading questions from, so one second. Okay, uh Richard shared, this sounds like a no win situation. You're damned if you do and damned if you don't. Who gets to determine who will live or die? It sounds like a lottery.
Yeah, who who appointed us judge? How do we know? How do we know what this really is? Yeah. I will tell you this, some big questions for me, Richard, are. Are those two guys behind me in hell right now? No, one I think is still alive, so or is he destined for hell? Is one in hell and is one destined for hell? And I'm not talking about Martin Luther King, not not talking about Desmond Tutu. I'm talking about the Dalai Lama and Thich Nhat Hanh. Who have given their lives for service to humanity, to treat people with love and respect. Don't really even have any personal possessions. So think about this. Think about this. Thich Nhat Hanh and the Dalai Lama have followed Jesus' command to sell all and give to the poor. They have totally followed that command. But because they don't read the same Bible or say the same name for God or connect to God through the same savior character. They're they're giving up everything. And furthermore, help stay with me, se- sexual people. Those two men ain't never had sex. Now, I don't I don't prescribe to asceticism and I don't believe that's how we prove our love to God, but they have sold everything. They have no physical possessions. They've never known the warmth of another human body in a sexual intimate moment. And yet, they are going to hell? When Christians who are in a higher tax bracket hoarding wealth, hoarding wealth. Are going to go to a rich people's and have a man another mansion in the sky. Think think about the stuff that we say and that we have believed or that Christians have believed. I just think it's time to take a little step back and look at who you who you think is going to heaven and who's not, or who we think. Or not you, your your crazy cousin them, amen.
Uh Lulu shared, because fear is an excellent taskmaster and controller. Ignorance to I am. Love requires the greatest leap of trust. It's vulnerable and therefore scary and unpopular. It's an upside down view.
It cer- it certainly is a leap, isn't it? Yeah, it it is a leap. How do we leap away from fear and into love? That's Lulu that was reminiscent of conversations with God, Neil Donald Walsh. We all create our world out of fear or love. It is a big leap. Thanks.
Andy Allison shared, the God of all will do what's right. His essence is love. If he has to spank some of us in the lake of fire. It will be correct. I trust God. I trust love.
Wow, you know, I trust the nature and character of a redemptive God. That is also not an absentee parent. And so. You brought into this conversation Reverend Allison, a justice narrative. What does that mean? Does a slave owner, does a an absentee father, does a child molester, does Hitler? Does Osama bin Laden, does whoever you wanna put on that list? Do they just, if the world is saved, whether they know it or not, do they just die and go right on to the pearly gates and streets of gold and. Angels tossing grapes into their mouth for eternity, playing harps, playing trampoline on clouds? Of course, that's imagery. Uh but how do we reconcile this with justice narratives? Someone who is who has lived a life, not a perfect life, but of trying to do what's right, trying to. Care for others, trying to to do justly, walk humbly, love mercy. What's our idea of fairness? Now, I would trouble that. I would trouble this depiction. Uh Reverend, with Jesus's parable of the the owner of the vineyard. Who went out and hired laborers. It's so difficult. Some worked all day, some worked half a day, some worked three hours, some only came in at the last hour. But they got the same pay as everybody else. That is difficult. And if you don't admit in your humanity that it's difficult, you ain't telling that you use a lie. Lie or liar, panties on fire, a quote from Borat. Yeah, you're you're not being honest because is my living in vain? Is my work in vain? No, of course not. It's not all in vain. Yeah, what am I doing this for? If everybody just goes, well, as Reverend, as you said, maybe there is a. An apocetostatic uh afterlife where there is a correction, a teaching, a padaya. Uh but eventually, watch this, even the lake of, watch this, even hell. And death are thrown into the lake. Even hell has to be purged in the lake of fire. Which is where their fire is the word sulfur. And and the word brimstone, uh sorry, brimstone is the word sulfur and fire is the word. The lake of fire and brimstone, the lake of purging and medicinal purging. A temporary lake of medicinal purging. Isn't that interesting? Yeah, thanks, Rev.
He also shared in another comment, which I find interesting, many have softened. He also shared in another comment which I find interesting, many have softened hell by calling it eternal separation. Which totally goes against scripture. There's nothing that can separate us from God.
Yeah, some some people it's separation. Uh so those are some entry points, Rev. Uh some it is just destruction. Like uh il- uh annihilation. That I don't I have to, I don't believe Muslims believe in a hell. It's leaving annihilation. If you don't, if you're not surrendered to Allah, there is just a an annihilation. Um but yeah, which for me, who at least annihilation is better than an eternal torture chamber where you have a customized body that can burn forever but never get burnt up. What in the world? Yeah. So yeah, there's there's softening. There's exaggerations of it. There's all kinds of entry points. Thanks, Rev.
I think that's it. Um I will go back and read a comment from LaSonia much earlier. Uh you were talking about um education levels. Uh LaSonia wrote fundamentalism calls us educated fools.
You got that degree on your wall? You ain't nothing but an educated fool. Yeah, and you know, the re- some of the reasoning for that LaSonia um is because I wanna be charitable to to the ancestors. I won't try to speak about my ancestors. Although my grandfather was illiterate, uh was was a sharecropper and and had to 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 um leave school at the at the third grade. And so he didn't learn to read until he was in his later teenagers by his wife who taught him to read. Uh but think about those who uh those who came uh who were into forced labor uh in slavery. That it was illegal to read. And so I want to be charitable to our histories uh that that some of us, all all of our ancestors had was the Holy Ghost. We couldn't afford to go to a doctor and so the Holy Ghost had to heal us. Medicine was not just demonized, it was unavailable. So let let us be charitable charitable to the ancestors. We honor you. We honor your path. However, um those who did not learn to read, those who could not afford to go to a doctor, those who were not exposed to higher education in their eternal state, they want that for us. They want us to be exposed. They they gave of themselves so that we might have better. Okay, they they came to bring us a better life. Um and so we honor their passing, we honor their living, not by remaining in ignorance, but by honoring that when they said, all I need is the Bible, all I need is the Holy Ghost, I don't need no, I don't need no medicine or Advil or Tylenol or higher education. They were doing the best with what they had and maybe coming out of slavery into reconstruction. Maybe they weren't exposed uh until you get people like Frederick Douglass um who be become the early abolitionists that are e- encouraging uh tho- the freed slaves to learn to read. So I I get I get where we come from. And I was, most of my family is uneducated. My my aunts and uncles did not finish seminary. I don't think I even have an aunt, an un- an unty that finished college. I don't think I have one. Now, on my on my mother's side, the Miller side, I did I did have one. But on the Palk side, I don't think I have an aunt or an aunt who finished finished college. I don't believe I do. Um and so not only finished college, definitely didn't go to seminary or get their master's work. And so I'm not I'm not belittling my ancestors or yours. I'm saying we have exposure now. We ha- we have. So how do we honor them? We we stand on their shoulders of sacrifice and we take the message further. So thanks for that. Thanks for for saying that beautiful. Alright, people, Sunday morning, we are gonna talk about what does it mean to bless Israel? Does it mean to bless a people, a person, a government? A nation state, a military? What does it really mean to bless to bless Israel or to bless? What does that mean? We're gonna talk about it. On Sunday, we're gonna come from an academic perspective and ask the Holy Ghost, jump on in here with us. And how does that inform us and inform our thinking about the Palestinian Israeli conflict right now? Are we to choose sides or are we to be more informed about what is happening? Maybe maybe a little con- conflation of both of those things. Alright, peoples, if you have a chance to give, we want you to continue to be faithful uh in your giving towards spirit and true sanctuary. Uh also encourage you, if you are coming to our family reunion in October, get online and register. We need to uh we need to secure some transportation, some meals. Uh and make sure we know we got enough for e- for everybody, everybody to get what you want and get plenty. Looking forward to seeing you guys. We love you. Have a great rest of your night. Go in peace.